Okay, we're on the air.
Okay. The zoning board of adjustment regular meeting hearing agenda for August 20th, 2024. We're starting the meeting at seven thirty six. Called to order and statement of compliance, adequate notice of this meeting, hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures, any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past ten thirty PM at any regular or special meeting slash hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting slash hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices, all in attendance are asked to mute their cell phones or electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceeding. Pledge of allegiance. Tom, your lead is please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vocal.
Yes, Mr. Ronio.
Here.
Ms. Brennan is excused tonight. Mr. Ginakis?
Here, sorry I'm late.
Mr. Flatley is excused tonight. Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Watts is excused tonight. Ms. Collins?
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Here.
Chairman Grek?
Here.
We have a quorum.
And our attorney is here. All right, good. Now, first thing we have to do, we don't have the many minutes, right?
No.
Okay.
I'm having a video.
So we'll move them till next meeting. But we do have to move to carry an application, we have to vote to carry it. It's use variance block one zero one zero four lot five point zero one in zone R dash two, three hundred South Northfield Road, application number two four dash one zero Z, Teresa Gallo, applicant proposes to convert a previously approved senior suite, excuse me, to a two family slash, uh, family slash mother daughter suite. It's going to be carried to September third, two thousand twenty four without prior notice, right? Without additional notice or?
Do you want to explain, you want me to?
Uh, yeah, you can explain because you know the situation.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So basically, we had had two applicants scheduled for tonight's meeting, and unfortunately the Echo Sentinel forgot to put both notices, not just one, but two, in the paper when they were supposed to, so unfortunately. So the second application that's not listed tonight, that applicant did not send out any notices to the two hundred foot list.
Just these people?
Teresa Gallo, who is listed tonight, she did send out list to the two hundred foot list.
So all she has to do is put the note, the newspaper notice?
Correct, which is why we're carrying on record, so she doesn't have to resend the two hundred foot list.
The two hundred notice.
She just have to put the notice.
So all those people within the two hundred feet, you have now been noticed that upon a motion by the board, do I hear a motion to carry this to September third, two thousand twenty four?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's moved. Now, we have board discussions of bylaws, did everyone get copies emailed to them of our original two thousand fifteen, a version of the township of Branchburgs, and also a version that our attorney put together, kind of putting both in the same and getting rid of some duplicate language. Did everybody have at least a chance to glance at those?
Yeah.
Okay, now?
These were sent prior to, they were sent on July first.
Yes, they were sent a while ago. Uh, Mr. Flatley, very studiously, studiously went over all of them and had some questions. Some were kind of, did you see this?
Was I?
I don't know if you were.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But without taking some, I mean, let me put it this way, who was the land use secretary and who was the administrator, I think that's pretty obvious. I, I think he was just asking that because he didn't know the titles that you held, so. But anyway, there's, um, would you explain how you did this version so that everybody knows the cross outs and the additions and things?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, so.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so there's four different documents here, right? I just want to identify each of them to explain. So the first one is the, obviously, the old bylaws we have, you know, it says township of Long Hill on the front, adopted in April seventh, two thousand fifteen. Those are the board's old bylaws. Um, the second document, it says rules of the Branchburg, or I'm sorry, rules of the board of adjustment of the township of Branchburg, two thousand twenty four. These are the, kind of the template quote unquote bylaws that my firm uses for pretty much all of our boards, right? Then we have the?
That's the Branchburg one.
Correct. Says Branchburg at the top on the, on the second line, just to identify things. Then there's the other two documents, there's a clean version and a marked up version, both are essentially the same thing, but there's a marked up version so you can see where the changes were made. But anyway, what you, I'm just going to refer to this as the non-marked up version, it says rules of the board of adjustment of the township of Long Hill dash two thousand twenty four, right? So this document was created using the template document as the base, and then what I did was fill in parts, fill in gaps basically between that one and the old, this board, the old version of this board's bylaws, right? So I took what was in the old version of this board's bylaws, plugged it into the Branchburg template version, and that's how you got the, you know, the new two thousand twenty four proposed rules in front of you, right? And then just to kind of, sort of explain like how the changes were made, I, you know, provided a marked up version too, so you guys can see what was plugged in and what was taken out. Hopefully it makes sense, I know there's a lot of pages here to kind of sift through, but.
It got longer, grew legs.
Yeah. So there might be too much in there, I, you know, I err on the side of just including everything, and if you guys want to pull things out, it's easier to do that as opposed to, you know, the other way around. That's it in a nutshell, you know, very, a lot of it's very standard stuff, you know, obviously establishing who the officers are, who the zoning, planning zoning administrator is.
What are the things that I found interesting?
Should we be looking at this version?
You can look at either version, that there's either the?
They're both the same.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right, that one just has like old.
Tells you where the changes are.
Right, right. Exactly.
One thing that, that I noticed that Mr. Flatley brought up, which I thought was a good point, on page eighteen of the clean one that says two thousand twenty four, paragraph two, colon, four dash one, he said, discussion shall be based upon any facts, shall, no discussion, decision shall be based on any facts not proved. He brought up a good point, the word fact in his mind meant that it was a fact in it. So maybe any evidence not proved on matters which are not on the record, um, any, I, I mean, instead of using the word fact?
Yeah, it's like, it's like a double negative, sort of.
Yeah, well, no.
The opposite of that. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean?
Double positive?
Facts.
Redundant?
Facts almost imply that it's true.
It's redundant. Yeah, so however, the board's decisions shall be based?
Shall, no decision shall be based upon any information not proved or any evidence not proved or?
Which are not on the record unless there be switch items.
Or on matters which are not on the record.
Yeah.
Instead of using the word facts, maybe you change that to?
Yeah, what that sentence is trying to say, that the board can only render a decision based on the evidence that's submitted before, right?
Right.
That's a good sentence.
Speculate, yeah, maybe that's, I have to go back and watch the tape because that's what we're going to plug in there instead.
Any evidence, any, any information not proved?
Yeah.
You choose the one information, so, because that's what it is basically, if it's not proved, it's just information.
Information, okay.
It's not fact, it's just information.
Yeah.
So that takes that little picadillo out of there.
Okay.
Yeah, he really did take a lot of time to look through this.
I, I question on the, also I can refer to it. The, well, I call it the red line version, but there's no red line in it. So there's two red lines. The, the, the red lined version, yeah, I guess.
Let's see some compatibility formatting issues. It's right on the one I had.
Yeah, it's blue and purple, I guess, on ours.
Yeah, you know, I had started, when I started working on this, I was working?
Which usually connotes that two people worked on it, I guess, but.
No, actually, it's just one person. Two, well, two different programs, so I started working on this in Google Docs because I don't have access to Word on my home laptop. Then I saved the file, started working out on my office computer through Word, so that's why you have two different colors.
But it assumes you're two different people, that's probably why it was doing that.
Right, I suppose, yeah.
Yeah, that's usually, so like under the planning and zoning administrator?
What page?
On page two and to three. It appears that this isn't entirely, like when I read this first, I was like, does this mean that you've just created a new section that was not in the old document, one, 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 one dash seven? But it is essentially the exact same thing that is in the, I mean, I was just looking, I didn't?
Yeah, the old, in the old bylaws?
Yes, in the old bylaws. This is essentially the same thing.
Exactly.
So I guess I'm wondering why it's been, why it looks like it's red lined on my copy at least, and it looks as if it was added, but you're saying, obviously it's not.
Oh, no, so, all right, let me, let me look through it.
Yeah.
See, this, this is the, the Branchburg ones, this is what I used as a template. I plugged in language from this one into this. So that language, it's, it's not that it was deleted from this, it was added to the other.
So the template that we're looking, the, the actual document here, anything that's just in black is actually from the Blanch, the Branchburg.
Correct.
And anything that's in here is actually just taken from the two thousand fifteen version and plugged into here.
Essentially.
And that's why it looks like it's new, where it is not really new, it's actually just, and the only thing that's really changed is if there's something that's essentially just crossed off and, which is under secretary.
Right.
That, that is something that was changed.
Right, it's either been completely removed or it was moved to another part of the document for, you know, organizational.
Um, we brought up something here, it goes, we don't have classes of members, or at least not.
That must be, yeah, that's a holdover from the planning board stuff.
And we also, we also don't run by Robert's rules, which is also on page one.
Right.
One into two.
Yeah, the chairperson, uh, shall be?
By Robert's rules, right, Deb?
Hmm?
We don't use Robert's rules?
No, the planning board does.
Shall be a member. And, yeah, we don't, okay.
Because you have basically voted a set of rules for the board, well, you didn't, but in two thousand fifteen, these bylaws?
One, one, one dash four.
We didn't even use Roberts prior to that, we just?
No, we didn't.
We just?
No rules.
Here we go.
It's not that there are no rules, it's that we, we really didn't have a need for rules, right? I mean?
Well, two thousand fifteen, someone?
More like the rules of a court, basically.
Yeah. So I, on one, one, one dash four, chairperson, I'll, I'll knock off everything from the chairperson.
Shall be a member and shall decide all points, just take out?
Regularly appointed as opposed to alternate?
Whoa, hold on, what?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was in P.
A, a regular member.
Yeah, the chairman shall be a member and?
Regular member.
Because we're calling them regular and alternate, not class four and?
Yeah, shall be a regular member and shall decide all points of order in matters, et cetera, et cetera. Okay.
And the same thing with the vice chairman, shall be a regular member.
Yeah, right, right.
A good catch on that one.
Instead of Rocket, instead of Robert's rules, you might want to, whatever this is called, rules of the board, Rob, this document?
Yeah, subject to these rules.
Right, subject to, within rules.
Same thing with the vice chair. Secretary, um, Deb, your, your title is board secretary, correct?
Yes.
So secretary would be improper?
Well, the thing is, there's two different, this is my understanding, there's two different offices, that, that was?
It was holding both of them.
The secretary and it's also planning and zoning, or planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning coordinator, correct.
Right, right. Is it coordinator or administrator?
It's coordinator, it's, you can't, there's a separate certification for what they call land use administrator, which I've been fighting with Rutgers for years to try to get because they canceled the program about five years ago.
So basically, you can't get it?
Pretty much, they're, they're coming up with a new program, yeah.
And when the hell are they going to do that?
Oh, oh, trust me, I've been asked.
How cold as hell?
Because I just re, redid my certificates this year.
So we have to change administrator to coordinator?
Correct, so until such time, you have an administrator, yes.
Right, and being that technically, Deb is two people, in a sense, you know?
I heard that about her, she has split, wasn't it?
Yeah, being as that, that's the case, that's, and we were talking about this earlier, that's why I think there's references to secretary.
Administrator throughout, so do you want to, are we going to change administrator throughout, or is that going to be?
Yeah, we could change it to, I'll make that as a general note, change.
To, to, to coordinator, zoning coordinator.
Or administrator?
No, not administrator, coordinator.
Because, like, the document may outlive the position that's currently filled, or the currently filled position may someday be the administrator.
But then we'll, then we'll change it then, just leave a coordinator now, because there is no such thing as the administrator at this point.
You may always have a coordinator, but you may not have somebody with the win.
We used to have an administrator, that's why I'm saying that.
Right.
Prior to you, we had an administrator.
You had a land use administrator, correct?
Yes, we did.
We could fix that.
Hence the old, the oldness of the law.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying, usually when I've done documents like this, I've had them live longer than?
Yeah, okay, so we could put coordinator slash administrator, we could do that.
Yeah. We could do that, yeah. When, in one, 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 one eight, one, one dash eight, employment of board experts, it refers to rule one, one, two. I'm not really sure what that was.
Let me, experts, professionals, the staff, with the attorney, planner, engineer, and secretary for two.
One, one, two, establishment and composition of the board?
Which is establishment and composition of the board.
Is that the right rule to it?
Yeah, I don't know that it's referred to there, that's why.
Okay, we can just knock, that, that's probably just an outdated reference that I didn't get too deep into. So I can just knock out referred to in rule one, one, one dash two.
Doesn't, doesn't have to be referred to.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we up to employment of board experts yet?
Yes.
We are, right? Okay, I did have a, currently, this board does not pay for the experts and professionals, correct?
No, we don't.
So, but this, but this says that we are paying them.
When?
In one, one through eight.
Yeah, following that, it says as may be necessary and proper. I know, at least from my, I don't know about Joe and Liz, but I know, like, we will bill the board directly for certain work as opposed to applicants, right? Like, so the bylaws, for example, that's on the board. I don't, I don't know if they do the same, they do? Okay, yeah.
Work on, for this particular board, it's work on annual report, it's, you know?
Right, a lesson class or something.
Right, right, and then, I know there's references later on to, to escrow when it comes to like application review.
Clarification on that?
Sure.
So, just to be clear, when a professional, planner, or the engineer are working on an application, is the applicant writing a check to them directly?
No.
And then you're writing into the township, and the township is paying them?
Right, yes.
So then who's paying them?
The township, and then I process the payment.
Right, it goes into an escrow account and then?
So then the township is paying them.
Yes, just not the money, you know?
No, in a direct way.
Right.
And around that way, the applicant is paying them.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah.
The applicant's money is being funneled through to township.
Right, right.
So then the way it's written is right?
Yeah, it's fine.
Especially there's some minor formatting things I need to go back and fix, you know, like, not hyphen, what is it? Oh, my God.
Raise?
No.
Backslash? The backslash.
No, like, like, this, what is this again?
Oh, parentheses.
Parenthesis, Jesus, God. It's been a long day, guys, lost half my fingers, lost half my brain too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So some of the, some of the parentheticals need to, I need to get cleaned up, I'm sure, you know?
In, in one, two, one, regular meetings, you don't have to do a forty eight twice, but?
One, two, one?
Page five.
We have forty eight twice?
Yeah, forty eight twice, you want me?
One, what is that?
It's the only change in that parag, oh, there's two changes in that paragraph.
Oh, yeah, forty eight's twice, right, okay.
This is one, colon, two, dash?
Page nine, page nine.
Oh, page nine.
No, mine is page five.
Am I missing a page?
No, it's, I'm, I'm using the clean version.
Yeah.
So it's a little easier to, to look at.
Oh, I'm missing some pages, not the version, oh, that's great, all right.
Uh, one, two, one, says the regular meetings will be the first and third Tuesdays, but that's not always the case?
It's not always the case.
It says general.
Did it say generally? I was, I was looking for?
I saw that too, and I was like, eh.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says you have just two forty eights in there.
Didn't see it, thank you.
Yeah.
So just take out one of the forty eights.
Yeah, they'll probably keep the one in parentheses, take the one that's not in parentheses.
Why do I have a page nine?
Jeez, what did that mean?
I don't know.
So strange.
Do you have the clean version without the changes?
I'm just, I'm just, where's the rule citation?
One, colon?
One, colon, two, dash, one.
Oh, no, that comes out. How many stenographers do we have on, on staff?
What page is that?
None?
That's a page.
Just asking, Deb? Page six, well, mine's six, it's one, two, dash, three. The board shall provide for the verbatim recording of the proceedings by stenographer.
Okay.
That ain't happening.
Okay, so we can, we can just excise that one.
Just electronic means?
Yeah.
Oh, just to get rid of the stenographer, believe everything else, I see.
Yeah, by electronic means.
All stenographers' notes have to come out then?
Yeah.
Some ports do do that, I think Summit, I have a stenographer there.
We did it, Summit's a city. Till recently, till a little, till?
Yeah, we used to, years ago.
Yeah, we used to have stenographers, sat right there.
Yep.
But the, the applicant paid for it, so it was like really increasing their cost. I mean, the applicants, we have one too, if he wants.
You know, you see a lot of the big developers will do that, especially when it's a contentious.
A lot of times, too, now, they'll take the, if they really want a transcript, they'll take the recording, which is why we record.
Right, right.
After the fact, if it, if anything, they'll secure it.
H ten, what, section one, colon, two, dash, five, agenda and notice?
Obviously the agenda.
It says the secretary or land use secretary, why do we need that secretary, it's just the land use secretary.
All right, so land use secretary, yeah, that's right.
Same thing. Same thing in subsection one, I guess, or?
Where's that?
It says prominently posted by the secretary or land use secretary.
What, what, what? Oh, yeah, yeah, right there, okay, yeah, by the secretary, okay. By the land use secretary.
I have a quick question, and I hate to jump back.
Yeah, that's okay.
The record of proceedings, I know that, about furnishing a transcript and that there's a?
What section?
Oh, this is one, one, colon, two, dash, three, record of proceedings, that we were just discussing.
Oh, I see.
About furnishing a transcript?
Right, eliminate the transcript.
And then duplicate, duplicate recording on request, is, should be mentioned anything in here about not only putting in a request if you want to view the meeting, but the fact that this is also memorial? These are often posted online on the township YouTube channel, is there something that you would put in here too about this being, being able to view publicly online, or you don't have to put that in there?
That's up to the board, you can if you want, mm-hmm.
I mean, I think this is just saying that we have to provide, and by doing, posting it online, I think that meets the requirement of having to provide, right?
And then to put it in there, then like, then we have to put it on YouTube.
Yeah, I think, I think it just means that we have to find a way to do it, and we're, we're adhering to the, to what it is right now by posting it online. If at some point we stop posting it online, we'd have to do something else, but I don't know if we want to say specifically what we have to do to meet that requirement.
Okay.
I mean, then it, like, as to Jerry's point before, we don't want to restrict ourselves too much as to what we want to do, I think we wanted to say?
You could put in a request for the transcript if you want to.
Yeah. But, but at least, at least the electronic and, you know, I mean, we, we don't even, you don't even have to request because it's there, right?
Okay.
I mean, you can request, and we'll just say it's there, right?
Yeah, you can download it from the website, yeah, okay.
I don't watch every single one I've ever missed.
Yeah, there was that transcript thing you was talking about?
Uh, two, colon, or I'm sorry, one, colon, two, dash, three. Well, transcripting is different than minutes, I mean, do we, I don't know, I don't know if that's a requirement, that we have to be able to provide that, I'd have to look into it, but, we, we don't keep a transcript, we, minutes, we have a recording, so.
Right, yeah. This is what mine says, the theme version.
Yeah, same thing. You see, I crossed out all the stuff.
Probably transcript when you have a stenographer.
Yeah.
Right.
But you could transcript.
You just killed us, stenographers, for now, you know?
Shall furnish, what are we saying?
They don't even, I mean, you don't even need stenographers anymore. Text the speech, does it.
All right, so we, with that one?
Speech to text.
In particular, here's what I'm going to recommend.
The board shall furnish a duplicate recording, our request.
And just get rid of transcript?
Yeah, just get rid of the word transcript. Yeah, just get rid of the word transcript. Because that costs a lot of money, having that transcribed.
Well, here's the question, it, it says a statutory, statutorily required, are we required to keep transcripts by New Jersey?
If you create one, you have to keep it, right, because then it becomes a public record and actually there's a certain retention schedule at the farm.
So let's not.
Let's not, say we did.
Let's just not create something and we won't get foiled or whatever.
Exactly. That's why, better to make phone calls than sending them sometime.
Under order of business, one colon two dash six.
Yes.
Sunshine notice. Can you explain that to me?
Oh, that's, that's a holdover from branch break, that's what they refer to when they do the, um, statement of compliance, so we can just switch that out with statement of compliance.
Okay.
Where's that, what, where's the wording on that?
Two.
Oh, okay.
And then three is salute to the flag. Can we change that to pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Otherwise, you have people snapnose.
I'll, um.
I think it's pretty standard to call it the flag salute, isn't it? Or no?
I've seen it both ways, really.
Yeah. What I'll do is I'll rewrite that, those, you know, one, three, fourteen to match the, uh, the agenda.
So that, so that sunshine notice, statement of compliance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, what you guys say on your agenda, I'll, I'll format that section, reflect the agenda. Because we usually follow the same basic format every meeting, so.
A pool of players, yeah, no, that's okay.
Yeah, I'll go through this with a fine tooth comb, I don't think it's anything, too, it's just, you know, just to, I wanted to put a good draft together for you guys to.
Oh, yeah, that was good, thank you.
Sorry, missing things.
Tom brought up the motions thing, and I guess I kind of didn't understand that either. A single board member votes in the adoption of a resolution of memorialization. I guess that's something we don't, we don't often have a second, so.
A motion requires a second.
What, what section are you looking at?
The motion section, right here.
Well, what, what number?
One, three, two.
Okay.
We're just moving, I'm just moving down from where we just were. Is there?
Yeah, that whole, that was borrowed from the old bylaws, but I, I think that needs to be rewritten a little bit. There, there's some interesting rules when it comes to whether or not a.
A motion doesn't get segmented?
Yeah, not only that, but when you, you know, you're at the point.
I think when it's, when you only have one person qualified, uh, when only one person is, um.
Is present to vote on a resolution.
Yeah, because he was the only one, maybe no one else.
Right, everyone else is missing.
Yeah, so everyone else was missing from it, or.
Yeah.
I guess that's why that was in there.
Right, that person can move it and then another board member can act, even if that other board member wasn't there, can second it, and that second, other board member can't vote on it.
Okay, okay.
So I'm just going to reflect.
Yeah, just, yeah, just fix that, yeah. Because sometimes the only person qualified because they were there would be one member.
Right. You can have a motion with just one.
Yeah.
On page seven of the redline version?
Yes.
What, what number?
On the same, one colon two dash six. Number eight is other business, and number twelve is open to board members. Is that what you're trying to call old slash new business?
Yeah, Tom, that, those were all carryovers from the branch break template.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm just going to swap all those out.
Got that whole section out.
Right, exactly. Swap it out with our usual agenda says, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, wouldn't be five members to make a quorum?
Who's that?
Oh, yeah.
Should make it four, yeah.
Yeah, as, as you can tell, this was adopted.
That's okay, it happens.
What, what section are you going to?
Uh, following, sorry, following down.
Chris, do you have to specify four if it's not a U variance?
One.
Four for C one, five for D.
Well, that, this just says to conduct business.
That's just, yeah, that's just to conduct business.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
She talks about that later, and then under voting procedure.
Right.
But I think you have to update that, too.
Yeah, yeah, totally. Should have used the, I should have used their planning boards bylaws, I'm still mixed, I'm going to get all these, uh, planning board references. What I say, I should, I should have used the zoning.
Yeah.
So under one, three, four, B.
Yeah.
You have five eligible board members, but that should be four, right? The simple majority.
Right.
Because we have seven numbers.
Oh, no, 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 that's right, yeah, no, except for applications requiring a variance pursuant to.
And that's F, right? And that's, that should be F, right? Because you, that, in.
Yeah, F is the one.
In B, you're just talking about a non-D variances.
Right.
Needs four, four eligible board members, right?
Oh, no, it is a D variance.
It'd be unemot.
B is D variance.
So then what's F?
F is just saying that you shouldn't abstain.
Oh.
But that's very weird. Continuing on, it says it becomes, it's going to be counted as a, an ascent. So it turns it into a yes, where it should just be present.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very bizarre, I don't even, that, that was a carryover from the old bylaws, so I see.
Okay.
We, we can just scrap that paragraph, because frankly, it's confusing.
Yeah, why don't you just stop that?
Okay, that's why I confused, I thought F was referring to D variances, but it's really both paragraphs.
A to E.
In, in one, colon, three dash three, um, maybe it's the last sentence that talks about, um. Like the votes not, if you're stepping back, the vote, you're not counted as one of the potential votes. And so, um, you guys were on F, I was still reading.
And they disagree.
And I'm just wondering, are they, are they in sync? Is my question more of a question than a.
Yeah, that's a good point, Gary. Disqualifying voting, for any reason declines or abstains, such abstention, yada, yada, shall be counted as a vote, either in favor or against, provided however that were abstention. shall not affect the count for determining whether there is a quorum, any member disqualifying, resisting, shall be counted.
No, that, it's.
I think that sounds right.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Basically, just still says you need a majority, and then five if it's a D variance.
Right.
And you need a quorum to even have a vote.
Right.
So you need at least four people to have a vote.
Right.
So the fewest amount of people you could have vote yes is three, I guess, right? That would be if you have four people here. But I don't, I don't think one, one colon three dash five on alternate board members is right.
That paragraph?
Maybe, maybe, maybe I'm, maybe I read it wrong before.
They can participate in discussions, but they can't vote except if another, if three members have said they're disqualified.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. It works.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, but an alternate one goes first.
I guess I.
Special committees, I don't know, I don't think this board's ever done one, but.
Oh, we have, we had one for the bylaws.
Oh, that's right.
And the ordinance review committee.
Yeah.
What was that, planning board?
That was planning, that was planning board.
And this gives.
But we put someone on it.
Yeah, it was me.
Yeah.
Right, my father is dying and you made me go do it.
Why is appointment of experts crossed out?
Uh, that was moved to another part. Yeah, I think that was back earlier on in the document, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, because he's on the cross out, Gary, it, it was either completely scrapped or it was shifted to a different part of the bylaws. So once I started plugging things in, it was like, okay, I gotta kind of reorder how this is to be.
Right, because, yeah, it was.
Looks a lot, like, did a lot more, but some of it was just moving stuff.
Right, right.
And that's why, and that's why, and that's why I was confused.
Now, on, he mentioned something, two colon two dash two, what are the instructions? It said here. Once an application filed, that's page eight, page thirteen, two colon two dash two. Once an application filed by the board in accordance with the appropriate ordinances, those, these rules and the board's instructions, what instructions?
I don't even know. We'll pull that out.
Now, where'd that come from?
I was probably, it might have been from the original.
It was? Okay, I don't remember.
Simon up here in New State. No, is that, that wasn't originally the same.
No.
That was originally hearing date adjourned.
I think it's got to the I instead of the one. I think he's on text and I on page twelve of the markup version.
No, we're not doing the markup version, I was.
Well, you're not, but.
Well, yeah, but I was, I was looking to see, it's two colon two dash two, paragraph, the first paragraph in that, that paragraph, I was looking to see where it came from, whether it was Branchburg's or ours.
Doesn't look like it's on either. Oh, here it is. It's in the Branchburg version, two, one, four.
But what the hell does that all mean?
They might, they might have had a separate instructions document, I don't even think they have one now, so that.
Well, that should be fixed then.
Yeah, so we'll cross that out. Once an application filed with the board in accordance with the appropriate ordinances, these rules, and these rules.
Oh, so this guy.
And the boys.
Is deemed complete, the case shall be assigned a hearing date, yada, yada, yada.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, actually, last sentence in that paragraph, a minimum of twenty-one days or longer lead time may be required by the board for amended maps, plans, or other documents where additional pre-hearing review is likely to be needed.
We don't, we take that out.
We can scrap that?
Yeah.
What are you up to?
That two colon two dash.
Two, three, three.
Also, um, there's two colon two dash one, A, upon receiving the application by the municipal land use officer, we don't have that, we should have by the, what do you want to call it, board secretary?
I guess that's the secretary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chris, looking back at two colon two dash three.
So wherever you see that, you put board secretary.
It's two colon two dash one.
A. But when you ever see that word, municipal land use officer, just put board secretary.
Yeah, I gotta.
Find and replace.
I'm sorry, Tom, what were you asking?
Two, uh, two colon two dash three, B, it talks about, um, the board will reschedule the applicant to the next available hearing. That word available, it can be read two different ways, as if the next hearing, or the next one where we have an available space. I don't know how to say it better, but as I, my first reading on this, I don't want this person who, they canceled their own meeting twice, to think, well, they're next up, because they had, had somebody waiting in line for them or something.
Next available hearing date, maybe put the word date in there?
Yeah.
That's all.
Which just means if there's other ones scheduled, they won't be able to get them to.
Appropriate to the next available hearing date.
Right.
That way, that way it, it's knows that it's only the date they're getting.
Right, and then they could always get rescheduled to that date, and then we could carry it again.
Certification for completeness shall be in accordance with the provisions of Long Hill Township ordinances, completeness requirements, we don't have a technical, we don't have a technical review committee anymore, right? Okay, so that, take that out.
And this board really can't have that anyway.
Yes.
Who, who deems complete, that is.
Two colon two dash four.
Well, hold on, so certification.
You are a committee of one.
Yeah.
I am a committee of one.
We don't have a technical.
No, as, as secretary or as coordinator?
Yeah.
Uh.
Coordinator.
Coordinator.
I, good question, I'd have to look at the ordinance. I don't, I don't remember what the ordinance says. Whether it calls me the board secretary, I think it calls me the coordinator in, in this circumstance.
Actually, no, I don't even, issued in accordance with the provisions of Long Hill Township ordinances, completeness or, and completeness requirements?
Yeah, and just take out, and technical.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and then, then it just kind of leaves it up to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's flexible then.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the ordinance will go over it.
Oh, I did something. That seems to have been done, you have order of proceedings, and then you have order of presentation.
What, what numbers are those at?
Uh, two colon three dash six.
Three dash five.
Why? That.
Yeah, I don't even think we need two colon three dash five, because we had earlier reference to, you know, kind of the, the basic agenda layout.
Well, two colon, three dash five is different.
This is an.
Than the agenda, uh, the, the, the one you were saying is the agenda. This is order of proceedings when an applicant steps up. But this doesn't make any sense, because all testimony should be under oath. I don't know, just.
I think.
Two colon three dash six.
I think when I was putting this together, order of proceedings was supposed to be more of a general explanation of the entire meeting. While order of presentation was an explanation of what happens during the hearing itself. Kind of like a subsection.
Okay, if that's fine, I just.
I mean, I, again, if you get.
I, I don't know.
I don't think there's going to be someone who's going to come sue us about this.
No. You didn't do any right, you would hope. You never know, there's, since some crazy lawsuits get filed.
Okay. Order of proceedings and order of presentation.
Yeah.
Seems, seems like the same thing, but that's fine.
What, do you want to scrap any of it?
No, I, I don't know, I don't think so.
What it's.
All mem, I, on H, I was looking at H here.
Yeah.
Any member of the board may place information on the record as to any relevant matter of which he or she has personal or official knowledge, for the purpose of amplifying the record, including facts ascertained from reviewing of the permanent, okay, I, that's fine.
Yeah, it's like I said, oh, I drove, I drove by the property, I saw, I liked it.
No, that's good, that's good.
Two colon two dash seven, you've stricken it. Just.
What was that, to what?
Two colon two dash seven.
Oh, it wouldn't be in there.
I, I think you're ahead of me, or am I ahead of you?
Dismissal.
We're ahead of you.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that because it was moved?
This is stricken?
I think it might have been moved to another.
Yeah.
Tom, hold on a second, let me check that, because I have a table contents on the other version.
Because we often do this, nobody shows up, see ya.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, uh, two colon five dash six.
Yes, two colon five dash six, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so it's moved.
I don't know, we're on two, four, five, two, colon, four, five. First of all, the, the title's typoed, but it's residential, whatever, the last, second to last word is typoed, but. It talks about, and this may be a process thing for you, Deb, I don't know, says the board secretary shall provide applicants with a virtual link for access to the board's preferred web conferencing platform, such that applicants may use said platform to present their exhibits.
Yeah, no, we don't have.
Yeah, that was a poll from Branchburg, I, I figured I'd include this in case you guys were interested in.
What was it?
I was going to say, I'm like, uh, that's never been in ours.
Two colon four dash five.
Two colon four dash five.
See, what, what they do with their meetings is they have a big screen, much like we have over there, but they use it, they'll have a computer setup.
Maybe we should, but, yeah, I don't, we don't do that.
Well, we would like to do that in the future.
You know something, I had that marked, too.
Right.
Take it out. Take it out.
Yeah, we would like to do that in the future, it's just not.
Take the whole section.
It leaves us, it leaves us the ability to do it if we don't talk about it.
That was more so, you know, something for you guys to consider maybe, if you wanted to conduct hearings that way.
Also, um, the removal of board members, you have that class thing in there, you have to put regular members.
Oh, yeah. What, uh?
Three colon one dash one.
Oh, yeah, whenever a member of this board.
Regular members.
Well.
Or any member.
Yeah.
Whenever a member.
Yeah. Yeah, and when we get into the, uh, the memo removal procedure stuff, that'll, we'll come back to this.
I was just looking for those.
Uh, we passed two, three, five?
No. Not past anything if there's a question.
I'm just looking at this, and I'm looking at two colon three dash five, number four and number, uh, five. Applicants present their case and board members slash consultants question applicants and their witnesses. It's just been my experience that it's kind of not, there's not a, a solid line that one has to happen and then the nest hap, next happens. We often ask questions as they're presenting their case.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there any way to, to word this so that?
What, what I.
We're not in violation of our own rules?
At the top of, uh, two colon three dash five, I could plug a paragraph that says, this is a general outline of.
Yes, right. They, these are, the general outline and may, and can be altered by the board.
Yeah, it's a general outline, subject to change.
The woman fuzzy wording.
Yeah. Fuzzy, fuzzy is important.
Just to jump to the end, best part, um, three colon four dash one, we can only relax then.
Yeah, relax. We can relax, I think.
Well, it's actually working, it's missing a word.
What?
Uh, for good cause shown or where strict application of any rule, work, work surprise or injustice, work two. So we need the word, work two surprise.
The last one. Work to surprise or.
Yes, you're adding the word two in between work and surprise. Or injustice? Injustice is not a verb.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
What is, I mean, what is even surprise being there?
Just, hey, relax.
Don't do it.
Or results, result in injustice.
Yeah, or result, or may result in, in injustice.
Now I'm gonna have that song on my head on like.
Yeah, would work to sup, uh, no, yeah, that's, I don't think we need to.
I don't even know why surprise is there.
Would work to surprise?
No.
How about we just cause injustice?
Yeah, that's why I take surprise out.
Would, would.
Result in.
Broad enough that you can do something with it.
Would result in an, an injustice.
Inju, I'm gonna recommend injustice or undue prejudice.
Right.
I have a question, and this is sort of a nitpicky thing. When I think that in three colon three dash one, when they say periodic performance evaluations of board staff, the performance of the board's consultants and staff. Staff makes me think that you're like an employee, oh, okay. But they say that, but they say that, uh, the board secretary and planning and administrative shall not be subject to the performance evaluation requirements detailed in this section.
Then we have no staff.
We have no staff.
So should we say just?
In according to administrative code, we have the ability to hire people.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we do review the planner and the engineer and the attorney.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys remember, at the beginning of this year, I think in February, there was a discussion about, actually the bylaws, we didn't realize at the time how old they were. Particularly with the, the eval, the performance evaluations, because I think, I think, Ed, you might have raised the issue that the township committee reviews, Deb.
Yeah.
But the board doesn't, so that's, this was.
Right.
This was, was those changes that I don't think we ever really did.
I think the coordinator is an employee of the township.
Yes, they are.
An employee of the board.
They, they passed an ordinance for that. They, it used to be, uh, so, but we still have, uh, review power over the, the experts.
Okay.
Correct.
I don't, i- is this true, the non-appearance, that it's four P M. on the Friday before the hearing, that they have to?
What, what section?
Two, five, two? It says, uh, when it's time for the hearing or continued hearing on an application, either the applicant or anyone on the applicant's behalf appears, and no adjournment has been previously requested by four P M. of the Friday preceding the hearing date. Do we hold them the Friday before the hearing date, or are we?
No, because things can happen up right till.
So they can, they could, they could request it up till an hour before the hearing, so I don't know.
They could show up and request it. I mean.
For the adjournment.
So you just say, no adjournment has been previously requested prior to the hearing day, prior to the. Yeah, the application may be dismissed without prejudice, picking up right there. Yeah, so by four P M. to a hearing day, exercising all that back.
So we're gonna say has been previously requested prior to the hearing day?
Right.
Prior to the hearing.
Prior to the hearing.
Cause they can do it on the date of, right?
Right.
Have the time for the hearing, yada, 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 the applicant or.
Or we can keep in the rules and then relax the rules. They want to do it on the same day.
Right.
So you can just say, just the hearing day or the Tuesday hearing day, cause we always meet on Tuesdays?
Not always. We can have special meetings on other days.
Well, that is true.
Yeah, we can.
It's then the Friday, yeah.
Um, usually Tuesdays is the only date that there's rooms available.
Yeah.
But we can meet outside.
No, Thursdays you could meet.
Yeah, right, Thursdays.
Wednesday's when the committee's not in.
Right, right, that's true. Um, okay. We should put prior to or at the hearing.
That's what, just prior to the hearing, that's why.
Well, it doesn't even have to be prior to be or at the hearing. Because they have come in and asked for the adjournment at the hearing, so it should be requested prior to or at the hearing.
Um, going back to two colon three dash five, number eleven. It just says board members deliberate. We tend to deliberate in open session. I don't think this assumes a closed session. Do we need to have the wording?
Can't deliberate in a closed session. We cannot deliberate in closed.
Actually, you're right, right, open people, open public.
Yeah, so we don't even need to put that in there.
Thank you. I mean, I, being that it's a general, like, kind of explanation of the rules, I, I mean, I have no issue just plugging in, board members deliberate in public.
What section is that?
Uh, two, colon, three dash five, number eleven.
Oh, eleven.
Cause that sounds, you, you're right. I, I, I know what you mean. When, when I hear that board members deliberate, that makes me think that it's more of like a closed thing.
Covenant of board members.
Public session, okay.
And also you can think of deliberating if you've been in a jury room where people are just.
Right.
All talking all at once, this, we have a more orderly fashion.
Right.
Yes, most of it.
With respect.
Right. You gotta put yourselves in the mind of like, an applicant or a member of the public reading this document.
Right, that's why we're, we're fixing that, so that people don't wonder.
Right. I would hope an applicant would take a look at this before coming in, but.
Yeah, but, yeah, right.
Nobody does.
Well, then we could say, hey.
Most of the board members haven't taken a look at it, come on.
This is to fix problems, isn't it?
This is just to provencially cover things, and if someone does look at it, it, they can't, they can't tell us we're not following something, or we're doing it differently.
Exactly.
If they're not sure, they can watch this video.
Right. They'll be painstakingly went over it.
Uh, the, all testimony shall be under oath, A. The first one says, the applicant shall present themselves, identify themselves and be sworn. Uh, but then B says, his or her attorney shall present. Isn't it sometimes an attorney is presenting themselves and not the applicant themselves?
The applicant's usually always here.
The applicant always introduces themselves, or the attorney introduces the applicant.
Well, I guess.
There's been cases where the applicant is present and it's just an attorney here.
Very seldom.
But it does happen.
The, yeah.
You could add the words applicant or applicant's representative.
Oh, the, the.
Or their proxy.
Exxon person was here.
No. The Taco Bell owner was in Texas.
But somebody, I think his representative Taco Bell.
Correct, this talks about the applicant.
Okay.
The applicant was a corporation.
Yeah, yeah, how does, how does a corporation?
There's corporate officers here in both cases.
Okay, what number is it? What section was that?
I'm just saying, if it's criminal.
Two, colon, three dash six.
The attorney is representing the applicant, then it's okay if you, you can say applicant.
Yeah, applicant or applicant's representative.
Right, okay, there you go.
And didn't we too, for the, um, the doggy daycare, um, application too, didn't, wasn't there a representative representing the owner?
The owner was here.
The owner was here.
No, the owner was here.
The owner was here for that application.
That was him?
Yes, he was a franchise owner.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about the, um, the gentleman that owns the shopping center.
Oh, but that.
Yeah.
He's the management company.
Yeah, it was the representative of the owner of the, right, but that wasn't.
Yeah, that was Ed Croman, and he was not present.
Right, right.
But he was not the applicant.
Right, he wasn't the applicant. He's a little like Howard Hughes, nobody ever sees him.
Nobody ever sees him.
Anything else, guys? Did it jump out actually?
I'm still going through.
You're still.
Got some coming up. And if anybody goes back and reviews again, you know, send them whatever changes you want me to make and all, plug them in there, we could take.
Oh, we have a few now, so, yeah.
Subpoenas.
Oh, this one says, thank board staff, board.
Three, three, three dash one?
Yeah, board experts.
First time I've seen it in writing. I guess I always knew it to be true, since you've been sworn in, but two, colon, four, dash, eight, false, you don't have to look it up, false testimony perjury.
Yep.
Yeah, it applies.
Mm-hmm.
I'm glad we have it in writing here though.
Mm-hmm. Comment, thanks. Comment.
Are you, are you funning me?
No.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's important, yeah.
Yeah.
Please to be perjured.
I never knew you would send me off to perjury for saying something that was a lie.
Send you off to jail.
Well, that's why Ed always says, do I need to remind you that you're still under oath?
Not sure if anyone's ever been prosecuted or lying in a land board report.
On Perry Mason, they are.
What'd they lie about, uh, really?
Yeah, it's hard to lie about a piece of property, right?
We've, we've, we've had some fudging though.
Well, I, I think when you come to those people that are trying to get, um, like grandfathered in for something, that's where you might have.
Right, right.
The exaggeration of something.
Before I got there, yeah, I had no idea, I didn't.
I didn't put that there, that was, yeah.
I don't know how.
Been there for a hundred years, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's brandish.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I hear every day.
Yeah.
I love, I love when they try to like weasel through it, and they're like, oh, well, you know, I, I, I thought we, we got the permit, but I guess we didn't, I, you know, I. My bad. You know, when you're getting a permit and when you're not.
The next four applications you guys are gonna see are like, dickin' up the.
And, and money.
Asking permission?
Yeah. Well, no, they, you know, bought with.
Well, that's not their fault, yeah.
Well, yeah, they inherit the problem.
Yeah. Is there anything you guys think I'm, I'm leaving out that we should include, or?
No.
It's pretty thorough, right? I mean, I, I, I was, I was like, kinda struggling, like, what else could we plug in this one, I think?
I mean, if we go on beyond twenty-four pages, come on.
Yeah.
I mean, but, you know, don't forget to put the nice cover sheet on it.
Right, of course. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna table contents and everything up to thirty.
Uh, three, colon, one dash one, class four member again?
Oh, yeah.
Nobody took that. Nobody told them to fix.
We chopped that one already?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, also can we define excused versus unexcused basis on that?
Yeah, what, what section, Tom?
Three, three, colon, one dash one.
Yes, we, we can define that.
Yeah.
I think it's defined in that other document you sent.
It, it was in the first draft, and then, uh.
No, no, the one you sent today.
Yeah, the memo, yeah, no, I.
Memo, it says.
I had a little paragraph kind of explaining the differences, but, uh.
Maybe we should put it in here.
Yeah.
Just put it as a paragraph here, excused, you know, board members excused when, unexcused is, just put it in here.
It's three, one.
Yeah, just put it as, call it three, colon, one, dash, two. Just explain what it is.
There might be also, uh, something else we might want to talk about. I hope this never happens to anyone, but if somebody's absent because they're, uh, same, same section. If somebody's absent with an excused absence because they're ill, let's just say that's an excused absence, and they're gonna be out for three months, they can be, uh, removed from the board. In this case.
Well, it says unexcused.
Unexcused, but it doesn't talk about excused absences and do they, do they amount to anything?
Oh, and then there's a whole nother separate category, um, excusable absences. That's where you don't get outright excused, but it, you know, let's say you got hit in a car, in a car wreck or something right the other way over here, you know, after the, yeah, exactly. Especially with me, I already got, good luck today.
You can't like say the dog ate my agenda four times in a row.
Right, right.
In the hospital.
Right, right. An, an excusable absence would be one where.
Unavoidable.
Right, it's on, it's on an unavoidable issue, but it's not outright excused at the front end, after the fact, you can't hold it against it.
This is covered, it seems to be covered in NJSA forty-eight.
Yeah, right, right.
It seemed to be covered in that section G.
Yeah.
Which is this other document.
Yeah, we tou, we touched on that.
Yeah, so it's already, I mean, I guess it's defined under state statute, is what you're saying, right?
Right, well, there's, when we get into that, there's, there's a lot of discussion to be had, so there's, I guess, a top level thing, there's certain. There's, there's, there's removing, there's vacating. Technically, um, three, colon, one, dash, one. Technically speaking, you could automatically be eliminated from the board, and I'm using the word eliminated deliberately. Even without being recommended to the township committee that you, that you'd be removed. Actually, let me go back to the memo.
Cause the memo, the memo states, just to, to Gary's point, whatever it says, which are not due to legitimate illness. So I assume that is supposed to speak to the fact that if you have a long-term illness or, you know, something.
Right, that would be.
That would be considered to be legitimate.
Exactly.
You have to bring a doctor's note, though.
Well, you bring up a very good point, because, you know, when I do the attendance and the governing body looks at the attendance, the governing body doesn't know.
Excuse or unexcuse.
If you were technically excused, they just look at it as, as an absence.
Right.
If there is, are excessive absences, then the, the committee comes back to me and asks, you know what, and then, you know, if I don't know, I say, we have to talk to that board member, but, you know. We talk about a lot being excused, and yes, of course, there's gonna be a few times that people miss the meetings. But the bottom line is, was when the governing body looks it over, all they say is an absence. They don't really care if it's excused or, or anything.
Look, by operation of the, of the M L U L, if you miss four meetings in a row, they're not, and they're not excused, you're automatically off the board anyway, you don't even have to get.
You've abandoned your position essentially, right?
You vacate your position.
Vacate position, okay.
Yeah, there's, uh, you can be removed, you could vacate your office, or you could forfeit your office. So forfeiture and vacation are very similar in that they're automatic, but, um, when you're forfeiting an office, it's, it's, usually it's a criminal act that you committed, right, like, you know, taking, taking a bribe to vote on an application for president, that's an easy one. You get convicted of that, you're automatically off the board.
Yeah, or if you just move out of town.
Right.
Something less, I'm more benign than that.
Well, that's when.
You might just resign then, right?
Well, there's a distinction. You, you vacate your office when you move out of town, but you forfeit your office when you're convicted.
Right.
But it's same effect, but, you know, technically.
Except if you amend it, mend it, just then you can, uh.
He hasn't been found guilty yet.
Yes, he was.
Oh, he was, he's.
And he's also no longer.
Oh, but, yes, but he wasn't censured by the senate.
He'll, he'll get off.
His sentencing was in February.
In November of each.
But he stepped down from the senate.
May.
How many gold bars does he have?
No, I don't, I think they.
I don't wanna have, I don't wanna have that mandatory.
I don't think he resigned.
No, yeah, no, it's this week he resigned.
And just instead of staff, put experts and consultants, experts.
Well, he resigned with the date. He was, he resigned with the date of.
Three, three, A?
B. A and B, yeah, just put the word experts and consultants, experts and consultants, and then just put may meet, cause we don't have, I don't wanna have.
You said Mondays, I was thinking.
May make appointment recognition.
Yes.
That, I was thinking.
Gotcha.
May meet with experts.
Yep.
And just stay, change the word, uh, staff to experts.
Yep, got.
The board secretary and the planning and zoning officer, coordinator.
Coordinator, yep, got that. Shallow the subject to the performance.
Yeah, technically, right now, we do not have a second senator.
I thought, I thought Murph was appointing somebody.
He appointed him, but he doesn't take office till September ninth.
Oh, great, isn't he?
But the senate's not doing any business right now, anyway.
Well, yeah, technically, we, we go nineteen days to that senator.
That's the best time, they can't screw anything up.
It's better, it's better when they're not doing anything.
According to this, today is men, men, this is his last day.
This is going away party, I, I wanted to.
Is there anything else that we're gonna do on this one? The bylaws?
Yeah.
I don't know, is there anything else?
Yeah, anybody got anything?
Is there anything else?
We're gonna have to review it again after.
Yeah, right.
Put another draft together, I'll show it to you guys, we'll, uh.
And just keep, don't make it.
One copy though?
Yeah.
Yeah, don't make it with the changes, just make it a clean copy.
Okay, clean version, yeah.
Don't do this, that's confusing.
I got you.
Uh, just do the version that I have here with the changes.
No problem.
So that way we're just looking at the same thing.
Or does he wanna do strike-throughs on the old one?
No, 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 no.
Underlines with strike-throughs.
Just, just do this version with the changes we just made. That way we don't have, oh, I'm looking at the one with the underlining, I'm looking, no.
No, I'm saying it's one version, but strike-throughs versus changes.
No, no, just if you wanna.
A clean version.
A clean version, and if you wanna make the changes in bold, that's fine, too. You know, like anything we, we changed in bold, put bold.
I like the redline version too, Jerry.
I like strike-throughs, but anyway.
Absolutely, or bold if we're adding stuff.
I can do both, I have no problem.
Strike-throughs.
Don't do both, do not do both on my account, I can figure it out.
But if you, if you're adding something, it should be bold, if you're striking something, it should be a line through it. Cause you can't put a line through what you added.
Right.
Right, so you bold what you added and you strike and you put a line, yeah, that's fine, that's good.
So I thought you did not want that.
No, 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 but I wanted it on this copy, not like that.
Yeah, just one copy, but so we know what the changes are.
Right, right.
I got it.
I didn't want it on the copy that had all the other stuff in it.
I'll stick to just bold and strike-through, to try to make it as simple as possible.
Yes, yes, on this version.
Right, I got you.
No, that, that was his base copy that he used to draw into our copy.
Yeah, not on this copy, cause this is confusing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alrighty, now, I think, um, if that's all we have at this point to talk about the bylaws, I think we did a, a bang-up job on it, that was good. A lot smoother than I thought.
Talking about this memorandum thing?
What?
Came in later. Can we speak about this already?
No, we're about to get to that.
Yes, okay, memorandum.
Guess it's new business?
It's sort of under bylaws.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of, if you guys recall, this is kinda out, there was a discussion at the last meeting about board member, member removal procedures, you guys asked me to put a memo together, kind of explaining everything. So that outcropped from the bylaws, so I guess.
Okay.
There's a tangential relationship there. Yeah, so just, I'll give you guys a quick, a quick overview of this, um, you know, as I was researching this, and quite frankly, I've never really dug into the topic before. Turns out there's a little more to it than just removing a board member, as I was kind of alluding to earlier, you can either get removed from your office, you could vacate your office, or you could forfeit your office. So I, I figured, you know, if we're gonna talk about removal, we might as well mention the vacation or forfeiture. Yeah, no, this is a little last minute getting to you guys, but if anyone has any questions, let me know, otherwise, you know, pretty straightforward, you know, you can only be removed. The removals are governed by NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash sixty-nine, and that pertains only to boards of adjustment, not planning boards, there's actually a separate statute for planning boards, for whatever reason, not relevant. But, um, you only be removed af, here's the standard for removing someone from office. You may be removed after a public hearing if you request it. But you have to be removed by the governing body and they have to have cause to remove you.
Right.
Right? So that's in a nutshell as to how someone could be, you know, permissibly removed from the board, not like automatic, like as it would be with a, a vacation or a forfeiture.
Or moving.
Right. So really the question in that, the question that arrived, arose in my mind, and I'm sure might arise in some of your minds out of hearing that, is, well, what, what is good cause to be removed? Well, there's a little bit of case law on it, um, the case, uh, Gholene v. Cardinelli, um, it's a nineteen seventy-six case, you can tell there's a, not a whole lot of case law on it, if I have to go back almost fifty years to, to dig up stuff for this. But basically, good cause, in order for there to be good cause to remove you, you must have committed an act of misfeasance or nonfeasance in the course of carrying out your duties as a board member. And that act of misfeasance or nonfeasance must have had, have had an impact which substantially disadvantages the public, right? So for example, you know, missing a number of meetings, right?
Right, right.
You know, if you're, you're disadvantaging the public if we don't have a quorum to have a meeting going.
Right, if we have to give adjournments.
Right, right, if you're coming in for a D variance, we don't have five.
And this is, only applies to removal of when you're in your term.
Correct.
Not non, not, non, not, not being, uh, not, not re-upped by the township committee, they can do that at any time.
Right, right, they have the discretion, they appoint, right, your term's up, your term's up, they, they decide whether.
But this is during your term.
Right, right. I mean, typically, the practical reality of this, very, very rarely will, you know, a governing body remove a board member unless it's something very egregious. Even if it, they're, you know, let's say they're a pain in the caboose, they'll wait till the end of their term and then just not reappoint them, you know, but this is, you know, in extreme circumstances.
Well, this also defines that when you, if you do move out of town, you gotta take yourself off.
Right.
Or, you know.
Well, you're, you automatically.
Right, you're automatically.
You're automatically gone as soon as you move out of town, you don't even have to technically resign, I mean, most people do, just as a courtesy. Yeah. Yeah, you, you automatically give up your office if it's declared by a judge, um, once you resign, obviously, I mean, that's pretty, it's given. Upon refusal of a person designated for appointment for such office to qualify or serve, I guess that would be like if you were appointed, but you actually lived in another town.
Yeah.
In reality, well, then you're automatically off. Um, when you die, obviously.
Oh, yeah. Unless you really want to.
Yeah, you can still vote to some places, right?
Jersey City, unless you live in Jersey City.
You know, residency requirement, obviously, move out of town. And then we get to G, which is a long paragraph, basically what that says is you missed four consecutive meetings. Or, I'm sorry, you missed, missed eight consecutive weeks, which isn't really applicable here, that's would be if we had a meeting every week, it would really make sense, or four consecutive regular meetings. Um, at the conclusion of that period, uh, the board would have to notify the governing body.
Right, they do it.
Right, and the governing body's the one who actually removes you, right?
Yeah, we have no power to do that.
Right, right. Well, you can recommend that they do.
We only have recommendation power, right?
Exactly. Yeah, but this, this kind, this kind of sub-paragraph gives you the, a little bit of flexibility in determining, you know, when you wanna remove people, like, let's say, okay, I missed three meetings in a row. Then I show up, then I miss another three, then I miss one. Well, technically, I haven't missed four consecutive meetings, but, you know, there's this, this clause at the end that says, uh. You know, you could, you know, nothing shall prevent you from, you know, establishing a policy that would, uh, set a lower threshold, provided it's, you know, not less than three.
Yeah, thank you for this, this is really, I mean, this, this is, like you said, there's really not a lot of substantive case law.
Right, because how often.
Doesn't happen that often, no. Most people, like you said, most of the times, they just wait for your term to be up and.
Right, and if you're gonna get removed, I mean, you gotta think, you gotta go pay for your own attorney to, to represent you, to sue the town, yeah, right, for a volunteer position. Well, you know what's funny, they really wanna read this. Yeah, the Cardinelli case that I referenced before, the, the facts of that case, there was a guy who was on the, he was on the planning board, actually, he was an engineer, he got assigned to an assignment in Germany. Notified the governing body and the board that he would be absent for a few months, they approved his leave of absence.
And then they.
Was supposed to come back, and then he missed another three meetings, and then they decided to remove him.
And he really wanted to be on there.
Yeah, he sued, and, well, you know what's funny? He actually requested attorney's fees, the court denied it, and this went all the way up to the Supreme Court.
Did he get back on?
Yeah, for the rest of his term, and then they just didn't reappoint him.
Yeah.
So he came back for like two months, then was gone.
And this was for a planning board?
Yep.
He was really into it.
Major city or was it a?
I forget what.
That had to be like political stuff where they were just fighting anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He just wanted to prove he was right.
Yeah.
God, I forget what's, I forget what jurisdiction that was on, hold on.
Cause nobody's that enthusiastic about any board seat, right?
I would hope not.
You'd be surprised.
I don't know.
I know a few people who are.
Sorry. Demerist.
I think Deb and I would have seen him.
It was in Demerist.
Where?
Demerist.
Demerist what?
New Jersey, New Jersey, Bergen County.
Oh, Bergen County.
Well, it's a due town, so he probably was a constitutional attorney himself.
I mean, come on.
It's a small, yeah.
Bergen, Bergen County politics of Bergen.
I never heard of Demerist.
Chris, can you explain, uh, G that you were just talking about? Uh, second half of the first sentence, without being excused by a majority of the authorized members of such body?
Yeah, that means if you do.
Of this board, so how many?
The board committee is top.
Member of a board committee, commission, it's talking, it's talking about that board, right?
Yeah.
Not the township committee.
No.
Or that authority.
No, it's talking to you, about you as the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but basically what that says, Tom, is that if you don't get an excused app, if you're not, if you're not excused, then you miss four straight weeks.
And we give that power to our secretary.
Okay, but it says excused by a majority of the authorized members of such body. Who are authorized members? You are, okay, so you have to excuse or not excuse.
Right.
I think we've, we've, we've say, ceded that power, right?
And that's all, I can't get that from just reading that.
Well, but.
Well, this isn't our board, this is our, this is state, right?
Yeah, this is the, this is the state law.
Yes, yeah, that's the way they word it. Confoluted as you.
And I think maybe in our own bylaws, we would say we ceded the power to.
Yeah, that might be something, exactly, to include in the bylaws, and make a note of that.
Instead of voting in each meeting saying, well, is it really?
Right, is it excused or not excused?
Not that this is gonna happen, but in terms of residence requirements, is it something you have to live here more than six months, is that? The requirement, or is it you just have to live here for one, you just have to have a resident that you own? Is it just you have to own property?
Is it a cool address here and it's a primary residence or do you?
Has to be a primary, yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta be a primary residence. So any.
It's a good question.
I never knew that.
Well, I just knew primary residence.
The primary residence by definition means it's three, or a hundred and eighty-three days, right, that you reside in that place, I mean, that's for tax purposes.
Yeah, I don't know if the same thing applies.
I guess it's only for snow, snowbirds or something.
Is it administered in COVID or in any bylaws?
Yeah. I have to go there, I, I, the statute. Retired folk who go down in the south.
So in, in this section, we're gonna say that the board hereby grants, or hereby, uh.
I mean, I've had, my previous boards, I've had people who've just been down and have only been there around three months and come on the board.
The power to declare.
On the board.
Authority to excuse.
I haven't seen on this board, but.
On the planning board.
On the planning board.